Mute u Jesu and welcome to tonight's Bible study. This is Pastor Shangasi. We are privileged once again that the Lord has given us an opportunity to sit under His teaching. If we can take this moment to pray briefly before we can commence our study. In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth, we thank you, our Father, for this opportunity. Humbling ourselves before you, Lord. Si kunegeza inti ziyo zetu. Nenwondwe etu, kosi ya makosia kulaga, utigongkele, ofisukwenza manje. All that want to impart into our lives, we pray that you may be able to accomplish it through your Spirit tonight. In the mighty and the powerful name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Amen. We are still on church governance and our focal point is on spiritual protocol. Last week, we studied a new subsection within this body of teaching. Term planting of the Lord and we found it in the Scripture in Isaiah, chapter 61, verse number three. We'll take just a minute to just read the Scripture so that we may commence with our teaching. We are reading from the New King James Version, Isaiah, chapter 61, verse number three. "To console those who mourn in Zion, to give them beautiful ashes, the oil of joy for mourning, the garment of praise for the spirit of heaviness, that they may be called the trees of righteousness, the planting of the Lord, that he may be glorified." And focal point is the term planting of the Lord and the purpose that goes together with it. We elaborated last time explaining the background behind the book of Isaiah, outlining the timeline and also the political climate for the writing of the book. We found that in the calendar of God, Isaiah was given the privilege to go beyond his time in terms of unpacking the plan of God. We found that even the Messiah was prophesied at three central points: the birth, the death, and also the resurrection of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Looking at the timeline that the book was written, it was over 700 years before the Lord came, but yet we found the Spirit of God giving Isaiah insight as to what is going to transpire in the life of the Messiah. In this chapter also, we see the same kind of a setting because if you read from verse number one and verse number two and part of this verse number three, it speaks about the works of the Messiah. It says, "The spirit of the Lord is upon me," and then he begin to unpacks, unpack what the Messiah will do when he comes to Israel. So we are going to go on and we are going to do a bit of a recap because what is central to what we are going to deliver today is the understanding of the term planting. So if we may go straight to the definitions, we look at this at length last time. We said that term planting can't be described naturally and also from Scripture. So naturally, the term planting just refers to setting something, setting something on the grounds. It can be seeds or it can be shoots and for the purpose of growth. So it also goes with a notion of fixing something, establishing something in a central position. Now, we also looked at the term planting from the Scripture. From the Scripture that we have just read, the term planting is the term called matter in Hebrew. We said it carries a three-fold meaning. It tells us about that the planting place, while simultaneously it also refers to the act of planting and also the plantation itself. So from this point onwards, we are able to gaze and get an understanding that the Lord, when he speaks, yes, Isaiah refers to the messianic works, but when the Lord closes the verse, he is highlighting his purpose for his chosen people of which at that time he was speaking to Israel through the prophet. He says that there may be planting of the Lord, that he may be glorified. So this planting goes with a spined, with the purpose of God, of him being glorified through his people. So now, when he is stooping down to our level of understanding, he is giving us a metaphor or rather a simile that when he refers to people, he is using a natural process of cheese and the progression in growth of cheese as he refers to the progression in growth of his person being imparted to his people. Okay, so we shall see this as we go on because our aim today is to have an appreciation of the fact that natural Israel was indeed the planting of the Lord. And then when we move from that premise, we are going to see that also the church is also the planting of the Lord. And then there is two entities, natural Israel and also the church. They are the planting of the Lord and they are driven and they are brought to existence for one purpose, to glorify Him. Alright, so moving right along, we see that this term planting is not only limited, does not only appear in Isaiah, chapter 61, verse number three, but it also appears in two other instances in the Bible. We also find it in Isaiah, chapter 60, verse number 21, whereby the Lord is also making a decree pertaining his people. Reads as follows, "Also your people shall all be righteous; they shall inherit the land forever, the branch of my planting, the work of my hands, that I may be glorified." So it appears once again, the term planting, the planting, the branch of my planting is again the term matter appearing in this passage of Scripture. And you also see the same meaning or rather the same purpose accompanying it. The Lord is saying, "The work of my hands, that I may be glorified." Alright, so we also see this term appearing also in the book of Micah, chapter one, verse number six, whereby Micah is prophesying about, is prophesying on the land of Judah. And this time around, he was speaking about the digression or rather than the nation moving out of the premises of God and he was conveying the heart of God pertaining their shift in position. He's saying, "Therefore I will make Samaria a heap of ruins in the field, a place for planting a vineyard; I will also pour down her stones into the valley; I will uncover her foundations." So again, the term planting in the Scripture is also the term matter, but we see now it we see it as it is being used. He's saying, "I will make Samaria a heap of ruins in the field, a place for planting a vineyard." So we can see that because of sin, Samaria was indeed inhabited by people, even the people of God. But now because of sin, the Lord is saying, "The place which was used for the dwelling of the people, it will now be a planting place for a vineyard." So we see degradation from men to creation because in Genesis, chapter one, verse number 26, the Lord said, "Let us create men in our own image and in our own likeness; and then he gave men dominion in the air, the land, and also the waters." So now we see that the place that was intended for men is now intended for a vineyard. So degradation because of sin. Alright, so today we want to look at Israel as the planting of the Lord because it is quite interesting how the Holy Spirit needs the Scriptures together. Looking at the book of Exodus, chapter 15, verse number 17, reading from the New King James Version. "You will bring them in and plant them in the mountain of your inheritance, in the place, O Lord, which you have made for your own dwelling, the sanctuary, O Lord, which your hands have made." So we are picking this up after, it's after the miraculous work of the Lord in chapter 14 whereby Israel comes out of Egypt after the Lord has multiplied the plagues and then they move to the Red Sea. And the Red Sea is before them and also because of the hardness of the heart of Pharaoh, he is pursuing them behind with multitudes of chariots and horses. And then we see Israel being in a situation whereby he could not go back because behind Israel was the army of Pharaoh and before them was the Red Sea. So we see Moses now being in a predicament. He had a dual vision because he saw the situation on the ground and also he knew the word of God because the Lord told Moses that the Egyptians that they see today, they are not going to see them anymore. But now the people, because they did not have the perspective of God, they were in panic and they were in fear. Ba sa ba abantu genma yoku tige, babe bona logo ogu senyamin kota umose, yenawe bona kabili. Wezo gunkulunkulu, kota foot in the sea mo esbon. Now, the Lord said to Moses, "Tell the people to go forward." So he opens the Red Sea and the people of God, they go in the Red Sea, they walk in dry ground. So after that, as we all understand, that the Lord commanded Moses to lift up his rod and the Red Sea came back to its position and Pharaoh and his chariots, the chariots of Pharaoh and all his host drowned in the midst of the sea. So now, chapter 15 is written after that incidence, after the hand of the Lord charged the armies of Pharaoh. Now, it's the song of Moses. So now it begins by highlighting the victory of the Lord that the horse and his rider has been thrown into the sea. And now coming to this place, they are now, it now speaks to the destiny. Ukuti uyaku pi u Israel, njengoba epuma ekibite. Because the verses prior, they speaks about the jukes of Idom and also of Moab, which were the countries that were surrounding the promised land, that they would hear of the works of the Lord and they would tremble. We see now a prophetic declaration in the song of victory because as you read the Scripture, if you fast forward in the times of Joshua now, when the spies ascend, they come to the house of Rehep and when Rehep begins to narrate the current climate in the city of Jericho, he speaks about the fear of God, of Israel that came upon the people. Utisizwile gunkulunkulu wenu, izinzi ziyo zetu zangwili. So the melting of the hearts of the kings, they were prophesied in this passage and the shock waves of the works of God, they propagated and they and they went beyond the physical position of Israel as he was advancing. So the glory or rather the acts of the Lord as he opened the Red Sea, those nimes, they were carried forward even unto the kings that were surrounding the promised land. So now, when he speaks, he is now speaking about his people now, about where they are going. He says, "You will bring them in and plant them." Again, we see that simile that we discussed about earlier on, that when he refers to people, he's making a natural example pertaining plants. He's saying, "People, he will plant them." Alright, so it means if we can understand the life of a plant and its growth, that meaning that we can instruct from there, we can use it to understand even the growth, our growth as we are planted in God. Alright, "I will bring them in and plant them in the mountain of my inheritance." So we see that the promised land is a chosen place for the Lord himself and he purpose in his heart to put his people there for a dwelling. "In the place, O Lord, which you have made for your own dwelling, the sanctuary, the sanctuary, O Lord, which your hands have established." So right from here, we see the heart of God that pertaining Jacob, Israel, it is the entire nation though made up of different people, different tribes, 12 tribes in total. Their collective is a plant of the Lord, is the planting of the Lord and it is the planting of the Lord for his glory. Alright, so going forward, we looking at the book of Numbers, chapter two, from verse one to verse number three and also verse number 39. What we see here is Israel in the wilderness. Now Moses, remember what the writer of the book of Hebrews said in Hebrew, chapter eight, verse number five. When he came to the mountain, the Lord gave him a pattern for the building of the tabernacle and he gave him an instruction that he should build according to what he has seen. So wa mnegeza, gunkulunkulu umoses, is tombes etebenekele zului. And then agugu na logo kupela amnegeza gona, even umanga besesibuka, kule instance sigi ona, the camping order of the tribes of Israel. We pointed out earlier on that there were 12 in total, but the Lord gave them the pattern as to how they should camp around the tabernacle in the wilderness. So crossing the Red Sea, moving into the wilderness and then receiving the law from Mount Sinai, moving on during the journey of the Exodus. So we find that the Lord will command the entire congregation of Israel to camp at a certain place. Scriptures like, passages of Scripture like Numbers, chapter nine, will tell you about the sequence of camping and also breaking of camp that so long as the glory of the Lord was upon the tabernacle, that was a signal to Israel that they should camp. So when the cloud lifted up from the tabernacle, it was a signal that they should move, that they should move. So now we see that in that instance, their time, it was not the natural time, but they were following the move of the glory of God. So it means should they be blindness as to see, as to sight at what was happening around the tabernacle, it means that they will miss the move of God. So now the focal point now is here, that the Lord gave them a camping pattern. Now, it was divided in four quadrants, the east, the west, the north, and the south. So as we can see before us, the picture that on the east, we, there was three tribes, Judah, Isacha, and Zebulun, and also the west, the extreme end, Benjamin, Menasai, and Ephraim. So this was the order that God wanted. Such that when you read the book of Numbers from chapter 23, whereby the king of Moab was now in fear because of this vast multitude of people of Israel as they were advancing towards the promised land. Uyasaba ebese etumela kuku kupa lam, umprophet, ukuti alegi se u Israel. Umanga bu palame ebona is setting ka Israeli, le esibona njengama nje, i order anayo. The words of a curse could not come out, but instead he blessed Israel. So now, as we can see, that this order did not come from, did not come from Moses, but it came from God. But when it was depicted and when it was kept, when this picture was printed by obedience in camping according to the order of God in earth. So we see that the enemy which was in the life of Moab, the king of Moab, because these kings, they stand for the enemy because they were in opposition of the move of God. So we know who is behind the opposition of every move of God. It is Satan. Right? So now, when, when, when they were speaking against a move of God, so they were unable to curse Israel because of what? Because of the pattern that Israel was in. So we see now already, we can instruct a lesson that whenever the patterns of heaven are being beamed down by obedience by men on earth, then the blessing of heaven rests in that place where the word of God is obeyed. Looking back at the Lord's prayer, Matthew, chapter six, verse number 10. "You will be done in earth as it is done in heaven." So whenever the will of God is done in earth as it is done in heaven, then God is involved and the blessing of God is upon that place. So we see that it was even in this instance, because of the order. Okay, because of the order, because of the wisdom of God first being downloaded unto the spirit of Moses, spoken. And when it was spoken, Israel adhering to that which was the, that which the Lord spoke to Moses in fear of God, walking according to submission as to keep the camping order. We see that the enemy was unable to curse Israel. Right? So now, this picture shows us the aerial view of the multitude of the people of God. Remember, he said he will plant them in his sanctuary. And remember, he said they shall be his planting. So we see the entire plant of God symbolized by Israel as they camped in the wilderness. Alright. So we can actually see that even by numbers, everything was in order because right in the inner core, you find the Levites and even the Levites, they were also divided because towards the east, you've got Moses and the priest and the rest of the Levites, they occupied their respective position according to the instruction of God. So that everything that came in order went according to what the Lord instructed. So the point is, this is the pattern of heaven, right? Which is the word of God obeyed, which is the testimony of obedience, which is the testimony of obedience that comes by the fear of the Lord. And we see that whenever this is intact, the God's blessing rested upon his people. Right? So moving right along, focusing now on Psalm 133, verse number one, two, three. We are going to pick up a few things here because again, we are trying to ascertain the principles. Alright. Because remember what we are speaking about, the planting of the Lord. And what we are showing is that Israel is the planting of the Lord and also the planting of the Lord going with the purpose of glorifying God. Now, the term glorifying God, so that I may be glorified, it simply means God, through natural Israel, his intention was that he may be seen through his people. His intention was that he may be seen, his person, his essence, and his attributes that could not be revealed unto creation by any other means could be displayed through his people. So now, when he calls his Israel, he is planting. He's saying, "This is my planting for one purpose that I may be seen." Alright, so now we see in Psalm 133, verses one, two, three. Looking at verse number one, we are reading from the New King James Version. "Behold, how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity." So now, term behold, it says, "See." It says, "Take full attention, stop and gaze, and be mindful of what is before your eyes." Now, behold, how good and how pleasant is good and pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. Now, looking at the verses that follows after that, verse number two, it says, "It is like the precious oil upon the head, running down on the beard, the beard of Aaron, running down on the edge of his garment." Right, so now, when the writer of the psalm is trying to give us a picture of how this unity is in the sight of God, maybe let me not limit it to the sight of God also because he says, "How good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together." So unity is good both in the sight of God and both to those who have the heart and the mind of God. Alright. So now he's making an example, that it is like a precious oil upon the head, running down on the beard, the beard of Aaron, running down on the edge of his garment. Now, Aaron is a priest and the precious oil that is referred to this Scripture is the anointing oil. Now, God spoke about this anointing oil, that it should not be used for any other means except for concentrating the priest, right? The priest that came from the tribe of Levi, who were of the tribe of Aaron. So this oil was the precious oil that was, that was used to separate the priest for the work of God. So now, the coming down of this oil from the head, running down on the beard and the beard of Aaron, even unto the edge of his garment, it speaks about, it speaks about what? It speaks about the life of God because the oil also speaks about a symbolic of the Holy Spirit. It speaks about the life of the spirit that does not emanate from the earthly realm, but that comes from God himself. So now, when this oil comes, it comes, it has one entrance. It enters the human domain by the head and in this case, it enters the human domain by the priesthood, the head of the priest. Again, coded behind this verse is the hierarchy or rather the spiritual protocol in the house of God because as we have been, as we have pointed out, the picture of Israel, not all tribes were given the privilege of entering into the priestly office, but it was only the Levites and even the Levites from the tribe of Levi, God concentrated the house of Aaron. So now, we see now the house of Aaron, Aaron being the head and we see now this flowing of this oil being the life of God, being the intervention of God in the entire nation through one head, through one, through one tribe and through one house within the tribe, which is the house of Levi and the priest and the priestly house of Aaron. So it moves from the head, running down on the beard and all the way to the edge. So it starts from the head all the way down. So consider now the priest because the picture before us, it shows us the the attire or the apparel of the priest as they were used by God to serve in the tabernacle. So when he speaks about this oil, it comes from the head, through the beard, as you can see, and all the way down, down, down the body of the priest, all the way to the edge of his garments. Now, very interesting things where we can speak about pertaining the priestly attire, the priestly garment, but for the purpose of this, of this teaching, we just wanted to bring forth the picture of the priest and be able to see and comprehend how the priest looked like as they served. So now, in the chest, we can see that there is an effort and in the effort, there are breastplates which comprised of 12 stones. And in these 12 stones were the names of the tribes of Israel. So fast forwarding to the meaning behind, behind these precious stones that were written the names of the tribes of Israel, we can see that God was speaking to the priestly office that they should carry the heart of God and they should also carry what the heart of the people. They should also carry and represent the people before God because when you see the priest, because this is the front side of the priest. So when you approach, when he approaches, these stones, you can be able to see. So and this effort, it was placed in their chest, which means God was speaking to them that they should carry the heart of the people in their, in the core of their being as they approach God. Alright, so now the oil came from the head, down the beard of the priest. So now, when you look at the direction of the flow of the oil, from the head through the beard, you will find that this oil will move also through the effort and also through the breastplate. So it will also touch these 12 stones. So we can actually see that God was speaking about spiritual order and protocol to Israel even by the priestly attire, that as the oil flows, it does not start from the stones that are in the chest, but it starts from the head of the priest. So now, what is this saying to us? We have found ourselves living in rebellion, living in complete disorder, disorientation pertaining the pattern of God in his house. Because umanga bu gunkulunkulebeka izin, ndoh endli niyak, uzubeka ng'ota yak, njoba sibon, ukutige, u oiluka lakanda, and then ebese uwelala, kusizwe sonke, lese sisbona simelu ngamachi, lauasesfubeni sompri. So eskuwenzayo, tino utige, sia ishinji ota, gankulunkulu, sunkufaka machi, makanda. Gani ghiabonaga lalapan, utama cha weke kanda, party, assesfubeni. The oil starts from the head and then it flows down to the chest and all the way down, alright? So, moving right along, perhaps we are going ahead of ourselves. If we can move back to the scripture, looking at verse number two. So again, verse number two, it speaks about the flow of the life of God, the economy of God. The pouring out of the love of of the life of God to men, that God set a man. So that when he enters his house, in this case Israel, he set the priest. And they are the ones that were supposed to go forward in that order. Even in the days of King Uzziah, we know that God gave him aid, and he was very successful. And he was able to subdue kings, and he was very powerful. The Lord of God says, when he became mighty, and the Lord helped him, and he became mighty. And then in his heart grew pride, that he also, he left the kingly office, and he wanted to. Burn incense and 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 enter the office of the priest. We find that the Lord struck him, and at the latter end of his life, he ended up being a leper. So you know that, so 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 from that instance, we can see. Good presence. It's just that we die and we we tend to be comfortable in our death, because it is spiritual. Failing to understand that spiritual death leads to physical death at the end. So now, there is death that comes by disobedience, just as Uzziah once said. You may start up well, and you may be caught up in God using you, and then. Alright, verse number two. It is like the jewel of Hamon descending upon the mountains of Zion. For there the Lord commanded blessing life forevermore. So now the Holy Spirit is making a double emphasis here. He is, he made an example by the priest, and now he is making an example. Because the psalm was written in the times of Israel by Prophet King David. And he's making a geographical, he's referring to a mountain that was in Israel at that time, Mount Hamon. So this mountain is located in the boundary of Syria and Lebanon. It is within, in Palestine, you can go there even now, it is still there. Now, geographically, the mountain is like two point eight kilometers in in altitude. So the position of this mountain. On the other side of the mountain is the Mediterranean plain, which is a very hot region. So you know that when the sun is 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 bright and and and. And it rises up, okay? And then as. The higher you go, the colder it becomes. It is a sunny day, but we can see armor traces. Alright, so now. On top of this mountain, what happens is that. As 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 the sun, as as as. From the top of the mountain now. From the top of the mountain. So it's both vegetation and also livestock that is surrounding this mountain. So the jewel of Hamon, it speaks about these waters that are coming down from the top to the bottom, impacting life. So as they come down, they form a mass streams, and these streams as they. So as the vapor comes up. So. If I know nature of Hamon descending from Mount Hamon. It pick. And then. The receiver amanze from the peak of the mountain. So the peak of the mountain is intact in its position, and also the regions below, they are intact into their position. So if we stay in our position as brethren now, speaking to both Israel and also the church. Then the Lord is saying, this blessing that is symbolized by the water coming down from the top to bottom will also fall on us. Because it's interdependence. So so they are using, so that the psalmist was using this natural example to symbolize. From the top of the mountain down, impacting. Now, what is, for there the Lord commanded the blessing, life forevermore. Again, Bellem was not able to curse Israel because of this unity. So when he says there, so there is what? He's saying, the blessing of the Lord. So it's the blessing of the Lord, ever set in life forevermore. So it means, through this blessing, that is attracted by the unity of the brethren, we find what, life forevermore. Now zooming into the word forevermore, what does it mean? It speaks about the life of God, the quality of life of God, of which the New Testament refers to it as the Zoe kind of life. So this is the life of God that we receive while we are still in time. But it is, it has a pe emitting effect, that it 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 in a in a tendency. And then. All the way to out outside of time, even unto the glory of God. So now, when he says we are his planting, referring to us as 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 a band of a back. So that he may be glorified. So in that statement, there is a duty to keep the unity, because this, he cannot be glorified. Because him being glorified is us receiving this life forevermore, of which we learn through the scripture. That it is attracted by the unity that is amongst the brethren. So it means this life forevermore, it is a roadmap, it is the life that we receive. Alright, so having said that, through that weight, we are now, we're looking at Israel. Wrapping up the part of Israel, that indeed Israel, natural Israel, was the plantation of the Lord for his glory. Now, looking at Romans chapter eleven, verse number nineteen to twenty-one. We see now the Holy Spirit in his wisdom, using Apostle Paul instrumentally in giving us a picture. And that even the church, the current church now, is the planting of the Lord. We are reading from the New King James, the two verses, Romans chapter eleven, verse number twenty-one to twenty. Romans chapter eleven, from verse number nineteen to verse number twenty-one, from the New King James Version. You would say then, branches were broken off that I may be grafted in. What's said, because of unbelief, they were broken off, and you stand by faith. Do not be houndy, fear. Okay, the focal point here is the term grafted. This is an agricultural term used when the nurseries are propagating trees. And you find that they will take a shoot, or just a shrub and cut it off. And then take another another plant and and insert it. In that plant at which they 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 cut off the 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 stem. So what happens is that you've got two separate entities. Uh you've got the parent plant, having its root being cut off. And then you've got another branch taken from another plant. It can be a similar a similar plant, it can be a different plant. But what is common is that there is one root system, but then you've got a branch that comes out externally and being inserted into the tree. So what happens is that the branch does not have life of its own, but it feeds from the root of the parent tree. So that's where the term crafting comes in. So it grows in the interface where the branch that comes that that comes externally. And also, and where it meets the parent tree. At times, a bark, a. So again, the Holy Spirit is using trees, and he is making, drawing a parallel between trees and also men. So now he said, what's said, because of unbelief, they were broken off, you stand by faith, do not be houndy, fear. So now, he's making a switch, that the parent tree is 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 natural Israel. In another place, he says, he he speaks about the church as the wild olive. And he also speaks about Israel as the cultivated olive. And he says we do not sustain the root, speaking about natural Israel. So again, we can see, we can get the gist of the of the verse is, is that even the church, what Israel was. As we have alluded to earlier on, by the scriptures and also by the explanation, that indeed Israel was was the planting of the Lord. Also through this verse, we can see that the church also was the planting of the Lord. So wrapping up, we we can see that if God wanted order, camping order to Israel. So that even when the enemy wanted to bring about a curse, but that curse could not come out but a blessing. So it means, even in the current church, if we are to walk in the blessing of God. If we are to walk in a manner that glorifies God, there has got to be one unity. There's got to be one unity through which, through which we can be able to to dwell together in harmony. As the scriptures have declared earlier on. So there is a pattern here. It is the fear of the Lord, because when you look at the word of God in the book of Job, chapter twenty-eight, verse number twenty-eight. He says, to to turn away from evil is understanding, and to fear the Lord is is wisdom. So now, the patterns of heaven, which is the wisdom of God, of which the Lord spoke through the mouth of the same apostle. Ephesians chapter three, verse number ten, that his intent is to show forth his manifold wisdom. So we cannot attain the wisdom of God if we do not fear God. So it's the fear of God, then the wisdom of God. Then in the wisdom of God, within the peripherals of the wisdom of God, we are able to extract the camping order while we are here on earth. Now, what does the camping order means? It means the lifestyle, the conduct in submission, that mirrors what is in the heart of God in his people. So whenever God sees that pattern being portrayed here on earth, he cannot help himself but to come down. It happened in the tabernacle of Moses, that when when everything was created according to the order of God. The order of God says, the cloud came to the tabernacle, and the priests were not able to minister, because the glory of God filled the temple. So when you see, working back, you see that everything was done according to the specification of God. Even in the life of Noah. Once again, where we go for wood, the plant, and that are speaking to the body of Christ. So it means there is an order that God needs, there is protocol that must be followed. And then and and if and if we are in total submission of that protocol of God, then what we can expect is that. Indeed, the glory of the Lord will come down and fill the temple as it did in the tabernacle of Moses. Moving on, even in the days of Solomon, when he had finished building the temple, again. Second Chronicles, chapter seven, from verse number one to verse number four. The word of God says, when he had finished praying, fire came down, and it consumed the sacrifice. And then after that, the glory of the Lord came down, and the people, they worshipped God and said, the Lord, he is God. Right, so now if we are to see the glory of God as the temple of the Lord. Order must be brought back to the Lord, must be brought back to the house of the Lord, through the agency of the fear of God. The Lord of God is saying, do not be houndy but fear. What is being hounded, houndy is the offspring of pride, alright? It is the high looks, it's the it's the elevated state of the mind of men. So he is saying, do not be houndy but fear. So we can see that the fear of the Lord is the root system, because we are the plantation of the Lord. So it means the fear of God, it is the mechanism through which we draw life from the waters of life. So what the fear of the Lord is in receiving wisdom. Alright, so what the root is to the tree in receiving life from the ground, it is what the fear of the Lord is. In receiving wisdom of God and also attracting the glory of the Lord for this house that we are in. Alright, so now, this is now taking us to our final point. Because we spoke about the church, right? And also natural Israel. So now, within the church, there is the local church, and and we are to submit unto the local church. And because if 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 we accept and we are in agreement with the local church statement of faith, vision and mission. And now we are speaking about zooming into the nation, the TFPC. And when we submit to the statement of faith and the vision that is upon the house. What we are saying, we are speaking about the word, we are proclaiming commitment. That we are committing ourselves to submit unto this local church structure. Mind you, we are moving in the concept of being plantations of the Lord. That we are making, you are making yourself a member of the plantation of the Lord, within the church, the framework of the local church structure. So now, when you commit, you are saying.